I would like to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselors Zakeham.
You? At this time, I'd ask all counselors and guests to please rise as Counselor Zakeham will introduce our clergy, and then please remain standing after that as Counselor Zakeham leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Zakeham?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, guests, it's my pleasure to introduce Linda Bonzi Spahnholz, who is the clerk of the Beacon Hill Friends Meeting on Beacon Hill in District 8. Linda has been a Quaker for over 25 years and a member of Beacon Hill Friends Meeting for 15 years. She is currently serving a three-year volunteer term as the clerk of the meeting house. She also works in Boston at MGH and lives in Somerville. She was just telling me about how she likes to ride her bike from there to MGH when the weather's a little nicer. I said, "We're working on some more bike infrastructure for her in the coming months." But without further ado, Linda to lead us in our prayer. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the invitation. I have a very short blessing for you all, and then I'd like to invite you to pray with May the gift of leadership awaken in you as a vocation, keep you mindful of the providence that calls you to serve. As high over mountains, the eagle spreads its wings. May your perspective be larger than the view from the foothills. When the way is flat and dull in times of gray endurance, may your imagination continue to evoke horizons. When the thirst burns in times of drought, may you be blessed to find the wells. May you have the wisdom to read time clearly and know when the seed of change will flourish. In your heart, may there be a sanctuary for the stillness where clarity is born. Quakers in New England and in Beacon Hill worship an unprogrammed worship, and when we pray, we seek to find a sense of stillness. We seek to find the divine in each other and in the world around us. When we pray, we quiet our mind and we listen to the Spirit. And I'd like to invite you all for a few moments of silence. We'll actually try to do a few minutes of silence. And I'd like to invite you to pray with me and to settle your mind and connect with however you relate to the divine. I will end the prayer with a handshake, and I invite you to shake hands with your neighbors. Thank you very much for the beautiful words, for that rare moment of stillness. Now, after all of the politicians are done shaking all the hands, we will come back to our seats for the pledge. Counselor Zakeham?
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please record Counselor Presley as present.
Thank you.
And now to the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0254, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of David Quigley as the Associate Commissioner to Parks and Recreation Department for a term expiring January 17, 2017. Docket number 0255, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Elisa Birdseye as an Associate Commissioner to the Parks and Recreation Department for a term expiring March 28, 2020. Docket number 0256, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Michelle Fales Rosario as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2017. Docket number 0257, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Brian Futini as a member of the Living Wage Advisory Committee for a term expiring February 1, 2019. Docket number 0258, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Ronald Marlowe as a member of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring August 13, 2016. Excuse me. And docket number 0259, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Kevin Coin as purchasing agent of the Purchasing Department effective January 4, 2016.
Docettes number 0254 through 0259 will be placed on file.
Bucket number 0260, communication was received from President Wu confirming the nonprofit organization Boston Youth Wrestling currently has no business or proposals in front of the City of Boston or the Boston City Council, and has no plans to submit any to either entity in the near future. Docket number 0261, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 27, 2016.
Docettes number 0260 and 0261 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0262, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 8:45 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, January 16, 2016. Docket number 0263, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 8:45 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, January 23, 2016. Docket number 0264, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 8:45 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, January 30, 2016. And docket number 0265, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 6:30 p.m. until 11:30 p.m. on Thursday, February 4, 2016. And docket number 0266, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 8:30 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, February 6, 2016. And docket number 0267, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 10:30 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. on Monday, February 8, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docettes number 0262 through 0267 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action, please.
Docket number 0165, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to submit to Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as MSBA, statements of interest to the accelerated repair program for the following schools: West Roxbury Education Complex in West Roxbury, Jackson Man K-8 in Austin, McCormick Middle School in Dorchester, Dever Elementary in Dorchester, Boston Latin School in Boston, Channing Elementary in Hyde Park, and James F. Condon Elementary in South Boston. The statement of interest describes and explains the deficiencies and priority categories for which the City of Boston may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future.
Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This matter was sponsored by Mayor Walsh and referred to the committee on January 27. The committee held a public hearing on Monday, February 8. Docket 0165 will authorize the school department to submit a statement of interest for funding consideration from the Mass School Building Authority to address roof and boiler deficiencies submitted under priority number 5. These include replacement renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in school facilities. Specifically, the projects relate to roof and boiler work at, as mentioned by the clerk, West Roxbury is a roof, Jackson Man K-8 is roof, McCormick Middle School is roof work, Dever Elementary is roof, and Boston Latin School, Channing Elementary, and the Condon are all boiler projects. Brian McLaughlin, the Assistant Director of Operations from the Public Facilities Department, and Carlton Jones from the School Department, Executive Director of Capital and Facilities Management, appeared before the committee to respond to questions and discuss the statement of interest submission process, priorities, and timelines. We have many of these in various stages right now, and I've supplied a packet of the information and the applications on everyone's desk. The timeline for this project, the deadline is Friday, so we need to act today. If successful in the review, we will be invited to the program likely in May, after which the school department would have to appropriate the upfront cost of the funds to hire a project manager and designer. Testing would take place in the fall. The project bidding likely for early 2017, and construction likely to take place in the summer of 2017. The reimbursement rate for these projects will be approximately 65%, and my recommendation is this docket 0165 ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to compliment Counselor Siomo on his hearing. I got to view it. I also want to compliment Counselor Asabi George for a very important point that was brought out in the hearing relative to the school building authority matters. And if we receive these dollars, right, and a building is mothballed, we pay for that, right? And I just want the council to note that when we receive these dollars and anyone who is licking their chops trying to take one of our school buildings, that it is in the interest of the City of Boston to keep these buildings in their portfolio due to that fact that we actually miss out and are required to pay these funds back, and we dealt with that with the Hyde Park Complex and were sent a warning letter. And I want to, again, give props to someone who's new on the council but really asked a very pertinent question relative to this. I also want to credit Mayor Walsh for actually doing these. We have not received the proper amount of money for what we put in as the City of Boston. And so for those viewing this, we actually all contribute one cent per sales tax dollar into this fund called the Mass School Building Authority. Boston puts a lot of money in that, and over a 20-year period, we only built six schools, while other people went and built up all of their schools in their portfolio. So I'm very excited about what Mayor Walsh is doing here and really continuing to push and make sure that Boston gets what we are owed relative to our school buildings. We're the oldest school system in the whole country. That says something about the state of our school buildings, and young people need this. So I would be voting in affirmative, but I just wanted to note that and, again, give props to Counselor Asabi George for pulling that out.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. So at this time, Counselor Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0165. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0165, the committee report has been accepted and the docket has been passed.
Docket number 0137, ordinance exempting the elderly and disabled from the city's snow removal requirement.
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a very productive discussion yesterday that was attended by most of our colleagues here, as well as Emily Shea of Elderly Affairs, Steve Tankle of Code Enforcement, WAC Boston, and also other members of the public. It was a very important conversation to address the hardship of elderly and disabled residents who are required to shovel the snow from the sidewalks in front of their home in a timely manner. And we also heard from folks that depend on clean and safe streets for them to traverse to get their children to school and/or to get to the local shops and stores. And so, very interesting discussion. We learned that the Elderly Commission and Code Enforcement do communicate regularly to accommodate residents who get those green tickets and to find out of there's ways that the city could further assist them. We also know that the Elderly Commission has experimented with a pilot program to bring in volunteers. We also heard from one of our colleagues, Counselor Tim McCarthy, who has had experience in this realm, particularly when you're talking about the volunteer brigade sector, and not oftentimes they show up in big numbers. And more importantly, he, like I, have children around the same age that would rather be playing Xbox or PS4. So great points that were made yesterday. At this point, I'd like the matter to remaining committee to have an additional hearing. There are a couple other parties we need to hear from. The Commission on Disabilities should have been present along with other invited guests. So at this time, I'll defer to the lead sponsor for his comments, but again, request that this matter remaining committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you very much, and I just want to thank Counselor Flaherty for a timely hearing. One of the things that actually affected individuals being able to make it here was that there was snow, and I think that is a great deal, speaks to the point. I believe, and I thank my colleagues for asking questions relative to implementation. The objective here is actually not to exempt individuals without an actual solution, and many of my colleagues have put forward, I believe, really great solution-based arguments. Counselor, actually, Counselor McCarthy spoke to an experience that we could actually potentially work off of. Counselor Linehan actually, when it was first submitted, actually spoke to a manner in which we could potentially pay for something like this. I don't believe that volunteering works. I think volunteering works for two inches of snow. I don't believe volunteering works for eight or nine or 10 inches of snow, and I believe that there has to be some type of financial accountability. I do look forward to individuals from the Youth Fund coming because I think there is a, in a week from now, we will greet young people who will demand summer jobs and year-round jobs. And so we have an opportunity, a pool of individuals who are asking us for opportunities to work and a need to take care of our elders. And I think also the best thing here is that we actually would be building a closer and well-knit city. And the Elderly Commission noted that we're looking in the City of Boston to be the most elder-friendly city in the whole world. And so I know there have been obstacles of implementation in programs like this in other places for Boston. I believe that we have an opportunity to lead here and definitely meet that contract that we have with elders. They took care of us. We should definitely take care of them. Thank you very much, and I look forward to pulling together another hearing soon. Thank you, Counsel President Wu.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Docket number 0137 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0185, order for hearing regarding the urban renewal plan.
Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a robust three-hour hearing yesterday regarding the urban renewal plans that need to be extended shortly in April. We heard from the Boston Redevelopment Authority about the many tools and how they have been applied and how they could be applied going forward if they were extended. And then we heard from each and every counselor to discuss and raise issues about why we need to extend them, length the geographical boundaries of these plans, and the relinquishing or empowerment of a 10-year plan in itself. So it seems to me that we'll need to have other sessions, how they will and when they will occur. I need to discuss a little bit further with the BRA to schedule appropriately, but I thought that the hearing went very well and that we need to do and they need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. I do want to just make one note on that item, that even though the text says order for a hearing, and it was held in the chamber, it was technically a working session, which is why we only had three hours and didn't have the public testimony part. Motions, orders, oh, sorry. Docket 0185 will remain in the Committee on Planning and Development. Now on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0268, Counselor O'Malley offers the following resolution, designating February as Oral Health Awareness Month.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As we celebrate Black History Month, it's important to not only reflect on African-American history and culture, well as ways to address structural, institutional, and overt racism, but we should also be discussing health disparities and overall equality. That's why I'm delighted to introduce a resolution today on behalf of the American Dental Association, designated February as Oral Health Awareness Month. This National Health Observance began as a day in 1949, became a week in 1955, and was extended to a month in 1981. The purpose of it is to bring together thousands of dedicated dental professionals, healthcare providers, and educators to promote the benefits of good oral health to children, their caregivers, teachers, and many others. According to the CDC, the disparities in oral health are profound. Despite major improvements in oral health for the population as a whole, oral health disparities exist for many racial and ethnic groups by socioeconomic status, gender, age, and geographic location. Dental decay is the most common chronic disease among children nationwide. It is four times more common than asthma, four times more common than early childhood obesity, and 20 times more common than diabetes. Overall, oral health can affect speech, nutrition, growth, and function, social development, employability, and productivity, as well as quality of life. Gum disease affects low-income individuals at vastly disproportionate rates. Untreated dental disease is linked to adverse health comms associated with diabetes, stroke, heart disease, bacterial pneumonia, preterm and low-birth weight deliveries, and in some instances, death. Students miss more than 51 million hours of school, and employed adults lose more than 164 million hours of work each year across the U.S. due to dental disease or dental visits. Dental decay affects 18% of the nation's children aged 2 to 4, 52% of children aged 6 to 8, and 61% of teenagers. Here in Suffolk County, 31% of third graders had untreated decay and 34% had at least one dental sealant. The purpose of this resolution and this national movement is to draw attention to these disparities while offering some concrete solutions to build a more healthful society. These solutions include greater access to dental care, particularly in low-income communities, ensuring children have access to preventive measures like sealants, fluoridated water, and/or fluoride supplements, and access to oral health professionals for regular screenings and treatment. It also includes educating families, healthcare providers, childcare providers, and others that come in contact with young children about the importance of dental care, including how to prevent disease and manage the disease after the onset. Finally, it also, another solution that this delves into is ensuring that pregnant women have access to oral health care during and after their pregnancy. Let's join the American Dental Association, National Institute of Health, and legislative bodies across the country in recognizing Oral Health Awareness Month here in the City of Boston. This is part of ongoing efforts at the local, state, and federal levels to improve the oral health for everyone and address an important social justice issue. I ask for suspension of the rules and passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley?
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the maker and to thank you for your leadership. It certainly is a social justice issue, and, you know, I've often remarked that when I visit schools, the first place I visit is with the school nurse, because that's where you can really get a sense of what are the barriers to learning and the challenges that are facing our children. And in addition to asthma, vision, anxiety, the issue of dental pain, especially for newcomers who are coming from countries where they don't have fluoride water, you know, this is something every school nurse brings up, is so many of our children that are in classes in excruciating pain. So I thank Counselor O'Malley for your leadership in this space to address this health disparity issue, and I wish to lend my name.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Presley's name. Please add Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Zakeham. Please add the chair's name, and Counselor Baker. At this time, Counsel, apologies, please add Counselor Campbell as well. Thank you, everyone. At this time, Counselor O'Malley moves for suspension and adoption of docket number 0268. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0268 has been suspended and adopted.
Docket number 0269, Counselor Asabi George offers the following order for hearing regarding the impact of homelessness on children, young adults, and families in Boston.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, for this opportunity, very much like the first day of school. I rise today to offer my first order for a hearing on the impacts of homelessness for our children, our families, and our young adults in Boston. There are many people and agencies doing heroic work on behalf of the homeless. Our mayor has made great strides working to end chronic veterans homelessness. Yet we are left with educated guesses on many questions about homeless families. I believe that when we know more, we can do better. My goal is to bring together representatives from the city, the state, and our nonprofit partners to accomplish three things. First, let's acknowledge that we have a crisis in the Commonwealth and in our great city. Family and child homelessness is on the rise. We need to work to understand all that's already being done. Next, we need a way to come, for people to come out of the shadows, to say and recognize that they are homeless or near homeless. We will work on a campaign to give families language that can preserve their dignity while seeking assistance. Last, we'll work together to find more effective and efficient ways to serve this population, especially our homeless children. This is the beginning of a very long conversation, a conversation about the ways that our public schools and our emergency shelters can protect those most vulnerable among us. All societies believe that children are our future, and as a mother of four, I know children need safety and security. They need support and consistency to build a vibrant future. But here in our own Commonwealth, many children and young adults do not have that basic foundation. We have approximately 4,300 families in the state in emergency shelters today. That number does not include families who are temporarily homeless, doubling up with other families, or living in their cars, too ashamed to come forward and ask for help. They stay invisible and are often forgotten and left behind alone. The shame and stigma of homelessness is universal. We can change that in Boston. And right here in our city of great universities, leading hospitals, and innovative industries, we have some 4,000 homeless students in Boston Public Schools. As a teacher, I know that homeless children have significant barriers to success in school. They miss more days, have a harder time making friends, and can't get involved in school activities. They are not able to maintain the important connections with peers, with teachers, and others who care about them. Some families are sheltered so far outside of the city that approximately 400 students spend up to four hours a day in transit to our Boston Public Schools. We know of families sheltered in Springfield, Greenfield, Fall River, and the Cape. That's 20 hours each week. They could spend learning, playing, making friends, being with family, resting, all of the activities. the activities that are crucial to childhood. And while our 400 homeless children are being transported into the city at an incredible cost, some 280 homeless students are attending other schools in other districts but sheltered here in the city of Boston. This transportation shuttle-- shuffle happens for good reasons. Schools provide a sorely needed constant in the lives of these children. We need to do this, and we need to do it better. The city of Boston has a legal and moral responsibility to support the stability and well-being of all children and families as they struggle through homelessness, and we must ensure that our resources are spent in the wisest ways possible. I am heartbroken imagining so much hardship in young lives at such a crucial moment in their development. But right now, we don't know enough to make the changes we must, and we must attempt to make them for their sake. I look forward to continuing this conversation and gathering the wisdom and knowledge all of my colleagues have, and to learn more, because I know together, we can and will do better.[672.94][672.94][applause]
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Congratulations to Counselor Asabi George for her maiden speech, and congratulations to President Wu for her forethought to create such an important committee on homelessness, mental health, and recovery. I'm proud to be the vice chair. I can't think of a better subject to kick this committee off, and I please sign my name to the order, and I look forward to an expedited hearing.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor McCarthy's name. Please add Counselor Zachem, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Linehan, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Baker. Please add the chair's name. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I want to compliment you, Counsel President Wu, for, as noted, the foresight to deal with this burning and sadly growing issue that we have in the city of Boston. And I also want to compliment you for putting it in the capable hands of Counselor Asabi George, who just showed her capability as well as eloquence, and I know she will do a good job stewarding this. As a Chair of Education, this is a huge issue. 4,000 students, we talk about achievement gap. How are young people going to deal in the classroom setting with the-- where we're debating about MCAS and park testing when they don't have food? Because one of the issues that we've dealt with in many schools is students hoarding. Many of these individuals are put in motel rooms with a little baby refrigerator, and four-- three or four individuals in that same room. As noted, we have a coordination and collaboration issue where we have people who are actually being housed in the city of Boston that go to other districts, and individuals in the city of Boston, and I've met individuals, Greenfield, Massachusetts, Springfield, Massachusetts. And on top of that, over 10% of our budget, Counselor Siomo, is spent on transportation and the school budget. And as we've gotten a home-based system, we actually are seeing that budget go up instead of go down because of these actual reasons. We have an opportunity to use the schools as a platform to deal with a great deal of this information, but if the schools aren't talking to Department of Neighborhood Development, aren't talking to the homeless department, and aren't talking to the state, without that collaboration and coordination, we will actually waste funding and also not provide the resources that will help these young people do better. I compliment you on your effort. I know that you have the burn in your belly to advance this, and I hope someday we can get rid of this committee. And no offense to you, but that you will have done such a great job that we, as a city of Boston, will do what we need to do, in particular for children relative to childhood homelessness. Thank you so much for bringing us to the forefront, and I also please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name. Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, just sounding a bit like an echo chamber here, but I do, again, want to just thank you for innovating, for being agile, and creating this committee. And I just want to thank Counselor Asabi George for your passion, for your perspective. When you were running for this seat, you said you felt like you deserved to sit at the big kids' table.[924.57][924.57][laughter] That you deserved to sit at the big kids' table.[928.12][928.12][laughter] And you certainly demonstrated that you earned your seat, and as an educator who's always imparting the need for your students to do their homework, you certainly did yours. And so I just want to thank you for your perspective, for your passion, for your first hearing order being consistent with that which you spoke about on the campaign trail. And, you know, really do just thank you for that. And then finally, as the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, certainly we know that healthy students are better learners, and these destabilized circumstances and conditions are certainly threatening the health of these children. So please do add my name, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Presley's name. Counselor Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I apologize for that, Counsel Presley. I just want to take this opportunity to commend Counselor Asabi George. Homelessness is very dear to me. I worked at Crossroads Family Shelter in East Boston in the late '80s, and I visit that shelter every single year. And it amazes me that every year, it's the same issues that I was dealing with when I worked there in the '80s. Families are living in one room at the Crossroads Family Shelter. There's not enough Section A certificates to find permanent housing. And what really gets me, it costs more money to house a family in a shelter, in a motel. It doesn't make sense. We should be working to find these families housing. We should be-- we should have been buying up triple-deckers many, many years ago and putting housing families there so we can offer them support once they find housing. But I want to commend the counselor and ask that my name be added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Lamatina's name. Docket number 0269 will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 0270, Counsel Flaherty offers the following order, for hearing regarding paid leave time for City of Boston employees donating blood.
Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam President. I filed this order to explore the possibility of reinstating a program that we actually had here in the city, and Dr. Feeney probably remembers it because it was in existence until the merger in 1996, which allows up to four hours of paid leave to donate blood at a certified donation center. And the program will closely resemble the one that the state offers, where last couple years, 2,000 state employees have donated blood. Statistics are pretty straightforward and somewhat staggering in that one out of every seven people that goes into a hospital requires a blood transfusion or some type of blood donation, and also that only 10% of the eligible population actually donates annually. So I think this is a great opportunity. It's sort of modeled after something I had filed several years back, the living donor-- living organ donor donation whereby if you're a city employee and you're giving a liver or kidney, then we're not going to start the clock on your sick leave and your vacation time to incentivize people to give the gift of life. So this is very similar to that, and my hope is that we'll have an expedited hearing, bring in Office of Human Resources, folks from the American Red Cross, maybe working through you, Madam President. The city council could sponsor its own blood drive here with our staff, central staff, and others, and other interested parties, maybe to step that off. But nonetheless, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor and to look at sort of when we have the program and when it stopped, why it stopped, and can we reinstitute that program. Very worthy and noble cause. So thank you very much, and look forward to an expedited hearing.
Thank you very much. Counsel Flaherty? Docket number 0270 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0271, Counsel Flaherty offers the following order, regarding a text amendment to the Boston zoning code for marijuana dispensaries.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As you recall, I first introduced this back in March of 2015. We held a hearing. We also held a working session in the Committee on Economic Development chaired by our colleague, City Counselor Sal Lamatina. Just to give background on this text amendment, Massachusetts state guidelines call for and allow municipalities to regulate and exercise control over the placement of dispensaries. The only thing that they ask for is a 500-foot buffer between schools and areas where children would congregate, you know, that's parks, playgrounds, ballfields, community pools, et cetera. I'm proposing a zoning restriction that would prohibit any marijuana dispensary, be it medicinal or recreational, from opening within one mile of another existing dispensary. I do that as a way to provide sensible protections for all of our neighborhoods so we can prevent any one neighborhood from being overrun and oversaturated with cannabis cafes, pot shops, marijuana novelty shops, and very similar to what we've seen in Colorado where, you know, great thriving business districts that have dry cleaners and a salon and a bakery and a coffee shop and nice restaurants have all converted to pot shops and cannabis cafes. So I think that would be disastrous for our small local businesses, which, for all of you know, in our neighborhoods are the lifeline of our city and our economy. So with that, you see in front of you a map based on the hearings, based on the working sessions, we've come up with after all the input, working with city planners and zoning experts, and in particular, like to mention the great work of Jeff Hampton from the Zoning Commission to put a one-mile radius around. So if you look there, that's the first and only medicinal facility that we currently have, and that one-mile radius is that red line that sort of gives you a sense as to what we're talking about. So my initial response, because we have to get a council passage, has to get over to the mayor, has to go to the B.R.A. board, and it has to get over to the Zoning Commission, was to move for suspension and passage, but recognizing through your leadership, two new members, give them an opportunity to read this information, get familiar with the subject matter, and to be able to ask any questions that they have that will put this over to a further date, and just ask that-- I know that most of, if not all, the council have participated in the previous hearing and working session, for our two newest members to get them up to speed so that they can make an informed decision as well as how it impacts their respective districts and across the city. So that said, I look forward to working together, and my next step will probably be to move for passage in the council in the next couple of weeks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Flaherty, for your work on this issue. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off by thanking Counsel Flaherty for his continued work on this and concern, I think, for all of our neighborhoods. I share the concern that our neighborhood business districts must be supported and helped as best we can across this city. However, I-- looking at this map, and I can see my house is about a quarter inch on this outside of the line, you know, it seems a little overbroad at this point, and I have some concerns about accessibility and about folks being able to-- who need this, who are prescribed this. And I think we're talking about two very different things here, between the medical marijuana dispensary and recreational facilities. I think this would be a very different conversation if we're talking about recreational marijuana. I think that's something that's much more along the lines of a liquor store, or bars, or anything else that we regularly have before us, have before the licensing board, the ZBA, through neighborhood groups. But medical marijuana dispensaries are healthcare facilities. There are strict screening processes. There are folks who need care, who need treatment, who often are elderly or disabled or low-income. And I wanted to-- I would want to make sure, through the hearing process, working with Counsel Flaherty, with the Zoning Commission, and with healthcare professionals, to make sure that this is accessible, that right-- the location right now is very T-accessible, transit-accessible, it's a central location. I want to make sure that as these places are properly vetted through the state process, through still the neighborhood process, I know I am very cautious about for a medical facility doing this work. So I would like to hear a little bit more about those impacts. I would want to make sure that folks who don't necessarily have access to a car or who are unable to drive themselves due to their condition that requires them to have medical marijuana to be able to access these facilities, not just have one that's accessible to transit as we get further and further out of the downtown core. So I look forward to learning more about this. I want to make sure that we are preventing any exclusivity or making it difficult for people to accept needed treatment. And I think if the state does, this legislature or the voters do choose to allow recreational marijuana, I think that approval process is something we definitely do need to address here, and I think would be more in line with when we talk about liquor stores or bars or other things. But I think there's a very big difference between these healthcare facilities, like Patriot Care that already exists, and, you know, pot shops or cafes or other things that could actually end up being a negative on our neighborhoods. With that, thank you again, Counsel Flaherty, for bringing this forward. Look forward to the hearing and learning more about the potential impacts of this restriction, positive and negative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the author, and I think that this particular action is indicative of an action that occurred a couple years back that at least made medical marijuana dispensaries a conditional use here in the city of Boston so that they had to go through a process that had to be vetted in the community and at the ZBA board. As many of you all well know, that Milk Street, that little red dot, is right in the middle of my district, and it's the only one in the city. And it seems to me that if we're going to have the availability of medical dispensaries for marijuana, as well as the potential for pot shops in the future, that, you know, to separate them and to have them distributed throughout the city only seems fair. And it won't allow for it to become a pot street, or that only one district has to carry the weight of a medical dispensary for the entire city. Many of my district colleagues went up and supported this particular dispensary in my district, which I opposed. And I didn't oppose-- I actually opposed it for the location, because I agree with Counsel Zachem, that it belongs in a medical-industrial area. It should be affiliated with medicine. But I also feel that if we're going to have these things available for folks, then they need to be throughout the city and isolated in their location. So I commend the author, and I ask that you add my name to this particular map.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Linehan's name. Counsel Baker. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Baker's name. Docket number 0271 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 0272, Counselors Flaherty and Campbell offer the following order, accepting the provisions of the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act.
Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I get the sense that my colleagues think that I'm failing to burn, but the fact of the matter is that the Community Preservation Act was actually signed into law by Governor Salucci back-- the late Governor Salucci, back in September 14th of 2000. I had led efforts back in '01 as the first city of Boston-like official to publicly support the enactment of the Community Preservation Act. And over the last 16 years, I've sat and watched 160 cities and towns across the Commonwealth adopt the CPA, none of them to date repealing it, and seeing them receive annual distributions from the State Community Preservation Trust Fund on a variety of local projects, senior housing, veteran housing, parks, playgrounds, ballfields, you know, historical sites, like many of which we have here in the city, but statues and community squares and things of that nature. So-- and as Boston is experiencing an era of economic development and unprecedented growth, I felt that it was appropriate to at least have this discussion. This order calls for the city council to have a hearing to discuss a binding referendum on this year's ballot with the presidential election this November, which will be obviously probably one of the highest turnouts that this city has seen. I believe that's an ideal opportunity for voters who ultimately will make the decision as to whether or not they wish and choose to adopt CPA. So I'd like to also offer and thank you-- and offer thanks to my co-sponsor, City Counsel Andrea Campbell as well, and look for her further comments on this matter. But the goal here will be to have a hearing to vet all these issues, look at the exemptions around seniors, fixed-income seniors, low-income seniors, folks in the disabled community, and make sure that we're putting our best foot forward. Whatever's on the ballot is reflective of the concerns that are raised through the hearing process, working with housing advocates and CPA advocates, but also listening to my colleagues and the concerns from their constituents. And those concerns will be varied, given that the recent tax assessment that went through, and some people are upset, some people are confused, some people's taxes went up, some down. So the devil will be in details, of course, but nonetheless, it's an opportunity for us to come together. And sadly, I have to note-- And sadly, I have to note that had it passed when it was initially put forward, you know, we have basically lost out on close to $300 million on very necessary funds. If you think about the aggressive affordable housing goals that our mayor has set, CPA clearly would go a long way in putting something close to maybe $20 million a year in play to help us not only address the housing needs, create workforce housing, senior housing, veteran housing, but you think about our ball fields, our playgrounds, our tot lots, many are in need of, you know, new fences and new grading and new lighting. All of that's in play on this as well, well as some of our very precious historical landmarks here in Boston. We'll have the very necessary funds to make some changes to them in terms of restoring and making sure that they remain the great historic landmarks that have, quite frankly, put the city on the map on a number of fronts. So with that said, I look forward to the hearing. Would love to hear from my co-sponsor and urge others to sign on if they see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Campbell.
I want to thank Counsel Flaherty for co-sponsoring this with me, and I'm delighted to co-sponsor this with him. This is something that District 4 residents in particular care deeply about. As the city continues to seek creative tools and ways to which to increase the availability of affordable housing, this is just one of those creative tools that offers additional funding if it gets adopted. But not just affordable housing, it can be used for open space, to create more recreational spaces, to preserve historical projects. So I am excited to be a part of this. And contrary to misconception, it's not a tax, it doesn't raise your tax rate, it's a surcharge that gets added on to your bill at the end once you get that bill. And for many neighborhoods, that average cost could be $0. Studies have shown that the citywide average would be about $23 for a resident for the year, which I think is manageable when you look at the benefits. And what often doesn't get talked about is city residents actually already pay into the state fund but don't actually reap the benefits. Other municipalities, especially wealthier municipalities, tend to reap the benefits because they've already adopted it, and the city of Boston hasn't. A study actually found that the city of Boston, which generated an estimated $11.4 million of the $180 million that was in that fund, did not receive any of this revenue because we didn't adopt it, we didn't adopt it back in 2001. Over 160 municipalities have adopted it, no one has revoked it. There's a range in the surcharge, if you can assess, we're seeking 1% as the order says. And I think what's great about this is an opportunity for voters and residents to decide. We simply have to give them that choice. And so I'm excited to support this. I look forward to the hearing. I look forward to working with all of you to try to get this passed this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Counsel Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to just let folks be aware that over the past, since I got elected in 2007, the burden on tax, property tax owners has expanded and increased over that time to almost an unfair burden in general. The state supplied 33% of our annual budget, operating budget, back in 2007, and presently they only provide 15%. And that number continues to go down. Which happens is that fortunately, our property values have increased, and fortunately, on Prop 2 and 1/2, we've been able to make up that difference, but clearly on the backs of property owners. And to add another 1% on top of that just seems to me to be, we should be cautious because we just can't keep going to the same well all of the time. These monies would be dedicated to things that I believe in, affordable housing, parks and rec, parks and open space, statues, and as well as historic preservation. These are all important things, and I think they're way underfunded, and they need all the money they can get. But in this particular case, if we look at our revenue, too much of it comes from property tax. And to add an additional burden, this seems to me to be something we should be extremely cautious about going forward. So, you know, I look forward to the hearing. I know that the matter is up to us to put on a ballot and leave to the residents who go to vote at that time. But taxes take everybody into consideration, not just those who go to the poll. So I just, we're representatives in a representative government, and I just think that that particular position should be heard and hopeful that my colleagues will look into the considerable burden that's placed on property tax, on the property owners here today in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just simply wish to commend the makers asked to have my name added, and did just want to take a moment to salute and celebrate the broad and diverse coalition of advocates that have kept this issue alive. And so just wanted to say thank you for that. And again, Counsel Flaherty, thank you for your steadfast leadership on this issue and good partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Presley's name. Please add Counsel Jackson's name. Counsel Lamatina, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Baker, and please add the chair's name. Docket number 0272 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk, please.
Docket number 0273, Counsel Wu for Counselor Campbell offered the following order.
Counsel Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket number 0273. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0273 has been passed.
Docket number 0274, Counsel Wu for Counselor Jackson offered the following order.
Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of docket 0274. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0274 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there are three late filed matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The clerk will please read the first late filed matter.
February 8, 2016, Counsel Wu ordered that effective February 12, the following named person be hereby appointed.
The chair moves for suspension and passage of the first late filed matter, which is a personnel matter. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The first late filed matter has been passed. Okay, great. Only two late filed matters. No problem. So the second late filed matter, please, Madam Clerk.
Offered by Counselor Jackson in the city of Boston for City Council, resolution calling on the Boston Redevelopment Authority, real estate developers, building owners and building managers to support community standards in the parking industry. Did I read first?
Yes, please.
Whereas the city of Boston is experiencing the building boom, therefore be it resolved that the Boston Redevelopment Authority report to the council if any real estate developer, building owner, or building manager fails to obtain the required certification with respect to meeting and honoring the community standards established in the parking industry.
Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to bring forward the voice of several thousand members of my district. The folks who we often, actually, some of us might snarl at because of the price of parking in the city of Boston as we're leaving, but there are many individuals who work in the parking garages in and around the city of Boston. And recently, many of them have been actually organized, and folks have fought for fair wages and standards for them while they work in garages. As we have this parking, I'm sorry, this building boom in the city of Boston, the objective is just to simply not leave these individuals behind and to support them as all of these big buildings get built up in the city of Boston, that, to ensure that we have community standards for those individuals who are making their living, taking care of their families by working in garages in and around the city of Boston. I think it's incumbent, and this body has in the past really stood out front for individuals who don't necessarily have a voice, and I think this is another case when we can do that. And so this is just simply to acknowledge and send a message that as we build, that we want to bring everybody in our city up with us rather than to only have a small group of individuals make and excel. We want to make sure that everyone has standards. Thank you very much. I will ask that we suspend and pass.
Thank you very much, Counsel Jackson. Mention and adoption. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Flaherty's name. Please add Counsel Linehan, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley. Please add Counsel Baker, and please add the chair. At this time, Counsel Jackson moves to, and please add Counsel Lamatina. At this time, Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and adoption of the second late filed matter. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The second late filed matter has been suspended and adopted. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. All right, seeing no takers, we will move on to the consent agenda. Again, there are two late filed matters, which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, matters are so added. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. So finally, before we conclude in memory of our beloved individuals, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Lunar New Year. The Lunar New Year started on Monday, and it's tradition, at least for the Chinese New Year, to celebrate it for 15 straight days, so you'll see me wearing red for a little while. And it's also customary to offer a little bit of luck in red envelopes, so hope that the next Lunar New Year brings you all lots of luck, prosperity, and good health. You may all open it at this time and file the disclosure with Madam Clerk. Okay, at this time, I ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Baker, Shannon Murray. For Counselor Siomo, Mario E. Pachito. For Counselor Asabi George, Nancy Foley. For Counselors McCarthy and O'Malley, Marna Persakini. For Counsel O'Malley, Margaret McClure. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again Wednesday, February 24th at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, council is adjourned.